Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for April 2nd, 2018. May have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson is excused.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation on your behalf, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Bike's not working. Okay, I have the green light. What did I just say? Oh, yeah, proclamations. We have several this evening. We have someone from the Northern Illinois Food Bank to receive. The first one, Nancy Iris Iguilar, did I say that properly?
Yes, actually, he did. That was good.
Wow, thank you. I don't always do that. This is for National Service Recognition Day, Recognition Day. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for their jobs to the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families and providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas National Service expands, excuse me, economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas 10 AmeriCorps vistas serve the Northern Illinois Food Bank, helping to solve hunger in our community. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, city of service and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 3rd, 2018. Therefore, be it resolved that I, David Albrumel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day. And I encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and to thank those who serve and find ways to give back to their communities. Nancy, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
This is for you. I'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you guys so much. Again, like he was mentioning, I'm one of 10 AmeriCorps vistas. A few different things that we do. We have helped the Food Bay distribute food to hungry neighbors by working with food pantries to expand their ability to distribute food. We develop partnerships in other social service organizations and have got more people involved in the Food Bay's mission through volunteering. So thank you so much for volunteering tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is proclamation for National Bike to School Day. We have Kate Perkins, the Chair of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission here tonight, received this proclamation. Welcome, Kate.
Thank you.
National Bike to School Day, May 9th, 2018. So we can anticipate this for a little while yet. Whereas, the lack of physical activity plays a leading role in health problems among children. And being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. Whereas, driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution. And whereas, an important role for parents and caregivers is to encourage children to be aware of the challenges and dangers that they face on their trip to school each day and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution. Whereas, community leaders and parents can determine the bikeability of their community by completing a bikeability checklist. And whereas, the city encourages and celebrates cycling and promotes bicycle safety among children through the bicycle safety course and inspection at the annual Bike Rodeo, which is coming up, May 19th, 2018.
A sunny and warm day in May.
Absolutely guaranteed it's gonna be. Whereas, the city encourages and celebrates cycling, oh, excuse me, have we said that? Whereas, children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to evaluate bicycling and walking conditions in their communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David Albrumel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, in recognition of this important event, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, as National Bike to School Day. Kate, thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you want to say something?
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. As a matter of fact, I walked here tonight. And I am grateful to the city for all you do to make our bike-friendly city into such a safe place to bike and walk around the city. As the mayor mentioned, we have, this is by no means the only event that the city sponsors to make our city a place to bike and walk. The mayor mentioned the Bike Rodeo. We also have the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, which is beginning quite soon. We also, this year, are revived, perhaps a new event. The mayor is sponsoring, is leading some bike rides for the citizens. And of course, the city also sponsors the commission that I'm Chair of, the Bicycle List and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Some things that we've done in partnership that, in the last year, we wrote a letter to IDOT about an unsafe intersection because of the city's intervention. Among other things, the speed limit was lowered there. So thank you for working on that, or for doing that. Thank you for the crossing lights at Batavia and Williams to make it safer for people to walk across that busy street. I look forward to other projects in the future. Alderman Widener has told me that the city's contemplating a complete streets policy. That's a very good, good step ahead. Of course, there's paths and trailheads being built. So just thank you very much for all you do to make our city bikable and walkable. Thank you, Mayor.
And finally, we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Chief Toronto will receive that this evening. Welcome, Chief. Whereas, DuPage Public Safety Communications, known as DuCom, plays a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community. And whereas, DuCom has been successfully serving the public safety communications needs of the City of Warrenville and surrounding communities since 1989. And whereas, while enduring long shifts and handling frequent life and death emergencies, DuCom telecommunications set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner. And whereas, DuCom telecommunications provide a critical communication link between the residents and police, fire and emergency medical service providers. And whereas, these individuals efficiently coordinate emergency service to assure the health and safety of our residents, visitors, and travelers in our cities, towns, villages, districts, and on our highways 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, our public safety communications personnel daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services. Now, therefore, I, David Albrumel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Warrenville. And I commend the devotion, contributions, and services of DuCom telecommunications. Chief, thanks for taking this.
Thanks, Mayor.
Want to say a couple of words?
Sure. I'm just a well-deserved proclamation for the men and women that work at DuCom and the difficult work they do, the long hours they put in. And, you know, it's always that voice of reassurance when you dial 911 and get that other person on the line. And as a token of our appreciation at the Warrenville Police Department, we're going to be providing a meal for a shift of the telecommunications during that week. This will not be a taxpayer's expense. It'll be funded entirely by us so that they can have a nice meal and we can show them how much we appreciate them. So, thank you again, Mayor.
And a note about DuCom. DuCom, you may or may not be aware, has been in the process of building a new facility on the county complex. We are taking position, taking possession of that on April 15th. The building will be turned over to DuCom. Probably won't be up and fully operational until sometime in July, but we'll have a grand opening celebration at that point. But it is going to really be perhaps, I would say, the best in the state and one of the best in the country. We have a great group of people. And the training that goes into the job that they do is phenomenal. So these folks don't just walk off the street and start picking up a phone. You have to, I've watched them. I've stood behind them with all these councils in front of them when they take a call. And it is amazing to see how efficient and how professional they are in very difficult situations, monitoring all these different things and typing in at the same time. And it's just amazing. So they do a wonderful job. And your son is a telecommunications, is he not, Chief? So, good people over there. Okay. Citizens' comments. We have three people that have signed up this evening. George Winston, we're not going to talk about the Kleinman property tonight. Did you still want to make any comments? Or would you prefer to keep those for the Plan Commission meeting Thursday night? No, there are other things on the agenda also, I believe. Sir, would you like to, yeah, please, go to the microphone. Identify yourself. Then the people at home know who you are.
My name is George Onesam. I've lived in Warrenville for a little over five years now. And I live in the Landon-Aurora Way area. Do you want my address or you need that?
Please.
Okay. I live at 29W 463 Amber Lane. And so, the only thing I want to voice is, I'm looking forward to the meeting on Thursday night. I have half a dozen concerns regarding the property, the plans for the property, the wetlands, the prairie path, which is, you know, a beautiful place to use. And that's, that's what I'm, I'm a citizen that's concerned.
Good.
So, all right.
See you Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have Bob Seibert and Pat O'Connor.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. How many apartments are too many apartments? 250? 500? Or 850 apartments? I know that in the last 48 years, no one has come to this podium and stated, "We need 850 apartments." However, individuals did come to this podium to request a satellite police station at the apartments on Route 59 and Batavia Road. The effect of adding 850 apartments by the City of Warrenville, the social, economic, and cultural balance would be changed forever. On the one hand, the City of Warrenville is spending thousands of dollars on marketing and branding the environmental benefits of Warrenville, the cool city, the open space. But on the other hand, the City of Warrenville is reducing the sites necessary for apartment buildings, thus not having sufficient space for the necessary requirements of the ordinance. Many variations to all these requests. Also, they're, because of the height, four stories, they're taking away the sun. Some of these buildings to the road are less than 20 feet. The sun will not shine afternoon on the side, which means you're not going to grow plants or turf. You're going to have the same thing you have in your branding, synthetic grass, synthetic plants, taking away from the whole benefit of Warrenville's history. The City of Warrenville appears to be in a state of contradiction.
Thank you, Bob. Pat?
Pat, my last name is O'Connell. I live at 3570 One Avenue, one mile down, down the way from you people. Only thing I wanted to say is, okay, here we go. At two, it is, two things I want to ask for my people. The first thing is, when is the time the people need to go to bed? Okay, for like, thing, that's one thing. And the second thing is, like, my like, like, one week and two weeks? I obviously, I always see the people like to go down my street so fast and all the way down to by the park, sitting there, drink, party, go back home, come down my street. A lot of time, a lot of time, I have my window open and, and I see a lot of cows going up and down the road so fast. I am worried by people walking down the way. I walk every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Move on to official and staff comments. Then I have several this evening. First, a reminder that the city will reimburse qualified seniors for the city telecommunications taxes paid on their phone bills. Applications are available at City Hall from the Finance Department or online and are due April 27th. So if you qualify for that particular exemption, you need to act before the 27th. And you can get what you need either online or come to City Hall to get the application to fill out. Also, there's a Community Health and Wellness Fair on Tuesday, April 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It's hosted by the Park District, and attendees can receive free blood pressure checks, free giveaways, and food samples. And it is at the Park District Center, of course. So that's Community Health and Wellness Fair, Tuesday, April 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, at the Park District Center. And finally, the 32nd Annual Arbor Day Celebration on April 28th is coming up, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, held at the Warrenville Park District. Also, attendees will receive free saplings. There will be door prizes, kids crafts, live entertainment, light refreshments, and an environmental fair. So all sorts of good things going on for Arbor Day Celebration, April 28th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, at the Park District. That's all I have this evening. Clerk?
I'll add something to the Arbor Day. If you want to plan on purchasing heirloom tomato plants, one of the members of Warrenville in Bloom has started plants. And so they will be for sale on Arbor Day at a reasonable price, some herbs. And she's very, very successful with her plants. So if you're looking to start a tomato garden, you'll be able to do that. Thanks.
Thanks, Emily. Treasurer?
Just want to remind everybody, before and after school, when you're driving around, please slow down and put the cell phone down. Thank you.
Good advice. Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought of something today when I was reading the packet, going back over it, that might be helpful to some people. We are going to approve minutes of the March, what was it, March 17th budget workshop that we had. It's a daunting volume, if you go to find it. Here's Alderman Ashower's copy of this volume. It's large and maybe intimidating. But the minutes of that budget workshop, which are available online, in the Agenda Center online, are a wonderful summary of what we did that morning from 9:00 to 12:00. It goes through all the important points without all the detail and all the little minutia of it. And it gives you, as I was reading it again today, it gives you a wonderful representation of the state of the city, where our money goes, property taxes, other taxes, what's being spent, what special projects are happening, the status of TIF III, the status of TIF IV, what's happening. And as I was reading, I thought, wow, if I didn't want to hit that big budget notebook, I would read this to get a really good overview of what's going on. So that's my suggestion for the evening, is to go online to the city website and look in the Agenda Center for March 17th, City Budget Workshop. And it's an interesting summary. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, City Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And City Attorney?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. We need then to approve the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda for the April 2nd, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Discussion, Alderman Bavir?
Yes, I'd like to remove 6A.
6A? Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed by the motioner and the seconder?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The agenda as amended is approved for this evening then. We have several sets of minutes needing approval also. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2018 City Council Budget Workshop, to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2018 City Council Closed Session, number one, number two, and to approve the minutes of the March 26th, 2018 Public Safety and Finance Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting.
Second. Second again by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6B, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation Waive Second Reading and Pass Ordinance O2018-12, authorizing the disposal of city-owned property through an auction conducted by Open Off Auction Services Incorporated. C, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2018-10, endorsing the DMMC municipal legislative positions and priorities for the 2018 Legislative Session. D, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2018-11, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement for light maintenance services between the City of Warrenville and the Warrenville Library District and a related Bill of Sale and Platte. E, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the Request to Solicit Donations for the August 7th, 2018 National Night Out Event. F, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the Request to Solicit Donations for the 13th Annual Bike Rodeo Event on May 19th, 2018. G, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Authorize the Partial Street Closure of Stafford Place for the Annual Bike Rodeo Event as requested by BPAC Staff Liaison Miller in a memo dated March 22nd, 2018. H, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the FY 2019 Board and Commission Work Plans. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting, held on February 5th, 15th, 2018. J, Receive and File Minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting, held on January 23rd, 2018, and February 27th, 2018. K, Receive and File Draft Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting, held on March 22nd, 2018. L, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to March 28th, 2018, in the amount of $61,147.51. And M, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before April 16th, 2018, in the amount of $157,787.36. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We'll go back to item 6A. Alderman Bavir, did you wish to bring that forward? Or were you going to vote against it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to offer first reading of Ordinance 0, or O2018-11, adopting the City of Warrenville FY 2019 Municipal Budget.
Second.
Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion, Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to vote on this because I was against one item on the budget, the purchase of the Sitco property. And so I want to vote on it.
You are going to vote against the motion or for the motion?
Against it.
Okay, so we should have someone else make the motion then? Right. That's kind of why I asked if you were going to vote against it.
We can't do, so we gotta have somebody else make the motion.
What do we do? Attorney?
Pardon?
Sorry. Do you need a vote for a first reading? It's just a first reading. It's not the approval. Is there a vote required? We don't normally do a first reading. We usually waive the second reading.
Normally, we're, normally we waive.
So do they need to have a vote at all at tonight's meeting? We do the adoption.
Right.
It's on the agenda for a first reading.
Well, we could have the motioner and the seconder withdraw- Well, we could have the motioner and the seconder withdraw the motion, and we can have another motion. Can't we do that?
True.
Okay, so, will you withdraw the motion, Alderman Bavir? Withdraw your motion.
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, and the seconder agree to that? Okay, now we'll have someone else make the motion. Alderman Goodman?
I would like to make a motion to offer first reading of Ordinance O2018-11, adopting the City of Warrenville Fiscal Year 2019 Municipal Budget.
Okay, and second by Alderman Berry. And you've already made your statement, so we're good to go. Any other statements on this particular motion? Alderman Goodman?
Well, since we're discussing the budget, one comment I wanted to make, which I don't think has been emphasized enough publicly, is how much we're adding to the police pension fund. And this is the third straight year that we're projecting an addition to the fund balance of over $2 million, which is excellent. That's very impressive. And it's not just coming from our contributions. We're also getting a good rate of return on the investment that we're making in the pensions for our police officers. And I just wanted to emphasize that in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. A lot of communities are not in the position we're in. That's a good place to be. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Ashauer?
I agree with Alderman Bavir.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please, then. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Okay, do I need to vote on this, then?
It's, it's not a tie. It's not a tie. It's four to three.
Right. Administrator?
You're not actually approving anything tonight, but whenever there's four in favor, my understanding is the mayor is required to vote.
Even if I'm not required, I still can, right? Okay, I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, onward and upward. We have the regular agenda, continuation of the FY 2019 Budget Discussion, if required. Anyone have any comments on the budget? My only comment would be, from my perspective, if you're against one item in a 20-some-million-dollar budget, it's more appropriate to state your opposition to that item and then approve the rest of the budget. It makes no sense to me to vote against the entire budget because you disapprove of one item in the budget. But that's, that's me. Okay, we have nothing under unfinished business, no new business, no closed session? You sure? Okay. Motion to adjourn? Alderman Widener?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.